All right, I think we're live. Good evening, Hamilton. It's January 4th. It's about 6:01. This is our reorg meeting in Zoom fashion. So thank you all for tuning in. I want to thank council. You know, the police chief's here and Mr. Malinsky's here, Mr. Zuber, and Denise Mazzio. So thank you all. With that, Denise, if you would like to go to the oath of office of the councilperson's elect, please.
Steve, thanks again for asking me to swear you in under these most unusual circumstances.
Thank you for doing it. We appreciate it.
Would you please raise your right hand? And Steve, please repeat after me. I, Steve Frigioni.
I, Steve Frigioni.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties required of me.
All duties required of me.
As councilman.
As councilman.
For the town of Hamilton.
For the town of Hamilton.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, would you please repeat after me? I, William.
I'm William Oliva.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties required of me.
All duties required of me.
As councilman.
As councilman.
For the town of Hamilton.
For the town of Hamilton.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sam, would you please repeat after me? I, Sam Rodeo.
I, Sam Rodeo.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties required of me.
All duties required of me.
As councilman.
As councilman.
For the town of Hamilton.
For the town of Hamilton.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations to the three councilmen. I know that that was recorded earlier for Hamilton's information, for the residents' information. That wasn't quite the way we normally do it, but in coronavirus and for the safety of everybody, that's the way we did it this year. I want to acknowledge councilperson Oliva, I mean Olivo, excuse me, I got, I got O and A here. I'm sorry. I apologize. I knew it was going to mess that up. Might as well get it over with right out of the gate. Councilperson Bill Olivo, I want to acknowledge that he was sworn in, in the building that he was instrumental in keeping at 100 Central Avenue. He served on council in 2005, if I have my dates correct, and four and five and, and, and prior, and he was instrumental. At that time, he ran as a Republican and he did a tremendous job and, and he felt the town hall should be kept in the location it was. So I want to thank him. I think that's a proud moment in, in Hamilton's history. I know it's a proud name in Mr. Olivo's history to get sworn in. I hope someday in the next couple of months that we could swear him in again in person so we can all stand and clap for him. But congratulations to all three of you and especially to Mr. Olivo. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to being in the town hall one day.
Where you are. With that, Frank, if we could have a roll call for 2021, please.
Hey, councilperson Frigioni.
Here.
Geraldo.
Yeah.
Griven.
Here.
Oliva.
Here.
Olivo. Olivo. I think, I think councilman Olivo froze.
Here. I'm here.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Rodeo.
Here.
Mayor DeDonato.
Here.
Public notice, notice this meeting has been posted and given to official newspapers. Due to the COVID-19 virus, this meeting will be held electronically by way of Zoom and broadcast live on our local cable channel nine. Each person who wishes to address council will be allowed in five minutes. Public may be heard by dialing 609-561-3040. 609-561-3040.
All rise for the pledge, please. I'd allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here's the two, first of two opportunities for the public to be heard. 609-561-3040 on agenda items only. 609-561-3040, agenda items only. With that, we'll pause for a second because I don't want to start into the agenda in case, at least pause for 30 seconds here. There's a little delay on TV. This is where we would normally have Deputy Mayor Griven do a song and dance, but I don't know if he prepared anything with his friends tonight. Did you work with Ray Shippi on to do something for New Year's Eve time?
We, we put together individual videos, but we were unfortunately unable to have the, the usual blueberry drop show that we've been having for the past three years. And so we look to be back better than ever next year. I guarantee it.
All right, all right. Hearing no one for the public portion, we'll close the first public portion. And this is a council appointment. Town solicitor, could I get a motion and a name from council, please?
Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Mike Malinsky of Fox Rothschild.
I'd like to second that motion.
Griven second. We have a first and second for Michael Malinsky. Any additional nominations? With that, we'll close the nominations in roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Eric DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. With that, I believe Mr. Malinsky is in attendance at town hall if he'd like to be sworn in.
Yeah, we're going to do the oath right here. I'll just turn this around this way.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm proud to be here again this evening to swear in our solicitor, Michael Malinsky. You guys might not be aware of this, but he is beginning his 15th year of service to the town of Hamilton. He was our solicitor for the land use board for 10 years and now he's starting his fifth year as our solicitor. Tonight I have holding the Bible for him, our chief. By the way, this is the Mayor Edward Marinelli Bible from 1988, Mayor Marinelli. I hope you're watching us this evening. Chief.
Michael, please repeat after me. I, Michael Malinsky.
I, Michael Malinsky.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties required of me.
All duties required of me.
As solicitor for the town of Hamilton.
As solicitor for the town of Hamilton.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations. Once again.
And I want to thank Mayor Council for giving me the opportunity and pleasure of representing you for another year.
Congratulations, Michael. All right, with that, I'd accept, you have in front of you a rules of council. We have to do an adoption. Could I get a first and a second, please?
So move.
Geraldo first.
Second.
Second Olivo. Discussion. These are the same as we've done. Nothing's been amended. It's the same as we've done the last 10 or 11 years to my knowledge. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonat, I'm sorry, Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. With that, we'll jump into mayor's council committee appointments. The first person, as I read them, denotes the chair. Administration, Griven, Olivo, and the mayor. Business and industry, Olivo, Griven, and the mayor. Education, Geraldo, Oliva, and the mayor. Finance is a committee of the, of all, all, all council. Law and order, the mayor, Rodeo, Olivo. Public works and transportation, Rodeo, Frigioni, and the mayor. Quality of life, Oliva, Geraldo, and the mayor. Water and sewer, Frigioni, Rodeo, and the mayor. Then we have some ad hoc committees. The green committee has done a wonderful job in the past and we expect big things from again this year. The chair this year will be Amy Menzel. Committee members will be Sarah Jennings, Michael McCullough, Eric Schules, Lisa Zoner, Jeanette Pierro, and Linda Esposito. Great A Carber Watershed Association again is the same. Robert Rittmeyer is the alternate and John Hannah is the member. Airport committee is public works and transportation and Frank Zuber. Communications director, Brooke Sacco. She did an excellent job last year. We're very thankful for Brooke Sacco. Clock committee, clock committee. In fact, I'm hearing our clock is probably a couple of weeks from being done. It probably won't come back then because of the delay from, I believe Ohio has a 14-day quarantine, but Robert Shank is working out all that. The clock committee is Shank, John Rumfalo, Dorothy Ferrera, Susan Cohen, Harry Stratford, Monica Woolerman, and Dan Bichalis. Property maintenance task force, another ad hoc committee. We have to do a little more work. Some of our housing is, is in pretty good shape and some of it still needs to be improved.
Mayor, just so you know on that, there's an error. Robert Jones should be replaced by Kevin Freel. I know I sent that out earlier, but that's, Kevin Freel should be there, not Robert Jones.
Okay. Okay, so we have to do some more work for the property maintenance. Extension 300. If you're, for whatever reason, you feel your conditions are substandard, it's an anonymous, anonymous extension. You dial 609-567-4300, extension 300. Please, it's monitored by myself. Nobody, we want to help you if your conditions are subpar. Nobody should live in subpar conditions. It's not fair. So that is the mayor and a deputy mayor, Deputy Mayor Griven, Shirley Grass, so Chief Freel and Jim Donio. Town advocate, which I'll speak about later, is Jim Donio. He's done a magnificent job. So thankful to have Jim. At one time I called him the chief of staff. He's, he's, I couldn't do this job without Jim Donio's help. Blank advisory committee. The chair is Alicia Murphy. The members are Donna Fierabo, Dennis Blewett, Dan Bichalis, Jason Resch, Tracy Carr, Stephen Carr, and David Gojri. Then these are mayor's appointment with council's approval. I know in the past we haven't done it, but I want council to approve these. The first section, environmental commission, three-year term, Charles Crawley. Environmental commission, three-year term, Marty Metro. Environmental Commission, taking over the position for Charles Crawley is Louis Antonio Diaz Campos. Historic preservation commission, class C, Carol Santur. Historic preservation, class A, Jeffrey Michelin. Historic preservation, class B, Christina McCullen. Chris, historic preservation alternate one, Lorraine Chapin. Historic preservation alternate two, Donna Hagan. Deputy mayor is Tom Griven. Obsessive review board is myself and from council is Sam Rodeo and Tom Griven. Planning and zoning, and I want to thank Quality of Life Jonathan Oliva and CM Rodeo for their help and they did a lot of help on this one. Planning and zoning alternate two, Jonathan Basque. Planning board sitting in the mayor's seat, Brooke Sacco. If Brooke is unavailable, councilman Olivo will, will sit there as in, between one or the other and we'll, we'll coordinate that back and forth. Planning board alternate for Ed Marinelli to a four-year term. Planning board alternate for Ralph Capaccio to a four-year term. Represented, represented the revitalization council is Jonathan Oliva. Alternate is Thomas Griven. Could I get a motion and approval from council for those this year, please?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Rodeo. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried.
Sorry, Mayor, who was the second on that?
Geraldo.
Geraldo, okay, thank you.
Right now, these are also mayor's appointments and these are going to be confirmed by council. Lake water quality. Now this is stayed the same. Three-year term, John Cannon. Three-year term, Robert Resch. Three-year term, William Parkhurst. One-year term, Dan Bichalis. The Lake Quality Park rep was changed this year to one-year term, Sean McClaff. Lake Quality alternate three, Tracy Patrangelo. Lake Quality alternate three, two-year term, Lynn Cicero. Park commission, two-year term, Luca Puccio. Park commission, two-year term, Paul Rodeo. Alternate.
Or Dilly.
Paul Ordilly, I'm sorry, I was looking down at, I'm sorry, I apologize. Park commission, two-year term, Paul Ordilly. Park commission alternate two, one-year term, Michael McCullen. Park commission counsel, Steve Frigioni. Park commission counsel, CM Rodeo. We need a motion of council, please.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Griven first. Second Geraldo. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Now, these are all council appointments. So we need an auditor for a term of one year. If someone would like to make a motion from council, please.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, for Leon Costello of Ford Scott Associates LLC.
Second emotion.
Rodeo, Geraldo. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Bond counsel for a term of one year. Somebody'd like to make a motion, please?
Motion Anthony Goldman of Wentz Goldman and Spitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Geraldo. Do we have a second? It was Oliva. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. We need a labor attorney.
Mayor, I'll make that motion for Mr. Barcy, Mr. Steve Barcy of Grugio Pepper, DeSanto, and Ruth.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
For Joni, Griven.
I'm sorry, Sam.
It's okay, not a problem. No big deal.
Discussion.
Mr. Barcy's been a, a fine addition and has served our town for a number of years. I'm happy that he is returning as our labor counsel. I think I speak for us all when he, when I say what a solid job Mr. Barcy does.
I agree. Thank you, Tom.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. We need a conflict solicitor for a term of one year.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Brian Howe as conflict solicitor for a term of one year.
Griven first.
I'll second the motion.
Olivo, second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Deputy clerk for a term of one year.
Move that we appoint Audrey Boyer as deputy town clerk.
Geraldo first.
I second.
Second Griven. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Fire chief and assistant fire chief for a term of one year.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion for the appointment of Sean McCree as fire chief and for Dominic DiGivon Angelo as assistant fire chief for a term of one year.
Second.
Griven, Geraldo, discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Court prosecutor for a term of one year.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor, for Shirley Grasso.
Rodeo first.
Second.
Geraldo second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Conflict court prosecutor for a term of one year.
Move to appoint Jessica Rodeo of Weiss Pars as conflict court prosecutor.
Geraldo first.
Second.
Second Olivo. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Mayor, Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Public defender for a term of one year.
Move to appoint Sam Curcio Jr.
Geraldo first.
Second, Mayor.
Second was Frigioni.
Yes.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Hello.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Public defender for a term of, conflict public defender for a term of one year. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for Linda Goff as conflict public defender for a term of one year.
Griven first.
Second.
Second Geraldo. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Airport consultant for a term of one year.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor, for DY consultants. Dennis Y. DY consultants, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilman Rodeo.
Second, Mayor.
Second for Joni. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Town planner for a term of one year.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion for Adams Raymond Hagan Engineering to be appointed as town planner.
Oliva.
Second.
Geraldo second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Town engineer for a term of one year, please.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, for AR to be town engineer for one year.
Second.
Rodeo, Geraldo, discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Alternate engineer for a term of one year.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for key engineers to be appointed as alternate, alternate town engineer.
Oliva first.
Second.
Geraldo's second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Griven.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Olivo.
Yes.
Rodeo.
Yes.
Mayor DeDonato.
Yes, motion carried. Traffic consultant for a term of one year.
Mayor, I'll make the motion for Mr. Chris Raymond of Adams Raymond Hagan.
For Joni first.
Second.
Geraldo second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Frigioni.
Yes.
Geraldo.
Yes.
Gribbin?
Yes.
Oliva?
Yes.
Olivo?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Mayor DiDonato?
Yes, motion carried. Town doc for a term of one year.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for Atlanta Care, Urgent Care and Occupational Medicine as town doctor for a term of one year.
Gribbin first.
Second.
I'm sorry, second was?
You can give it to Jonathan.
Jonathan Oliva?
Yep.
Discussions.
I didn't make this steal one from you, Joe.
No, it's mine by me.
Frank, what's the tally?
Uh, it's one more, I think.
Roll call, please.
Counsel person for Joni?
Yes.
Gerallo?
Yes.
Gribbin?
Yes.
Oliva?
Yes.
Olivo?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Mayor DiDonato?
Yes, motion carried. Planning board class three council member for a term of one year.
Mayor, I'll make the motion for Councilman Jonathan Oliva to be appointed to the position of planning board class three member.
Gribbin first.
Second.
Second, Gerallo. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel person for Joni?
Yes.
Gerallo?
Yes.
Gribbin?
Yes.
Oliva?
Abstain.
Yep. Olivo?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Mayor DiDonato?
Yes, motion carried. Obsessivity review board, uh, council member, one year term. We need two members.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Councilman Sam Rodeo and Deputy Mayor Tom Gribbin for a term of one year.
Oliva first.
Second.
Second for Joni. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel person for Joni?
Yes.
Gerallo?
Yes.
Gribbin abstain? Oliva?
Yes.
Olivo?
Yes.
Rodeo abstain?
Yes.
Mayor DiDonato?
Yes, motion carried. Frank, we'll jump over to the clerk slash administrative report with the resolutions.
God, thank you, Mayor. Resolution ten, deferred school tax. Resolution eleven, does uh, designate banks and signatures. Resolution twelve, state vendors. Resolution thirteen, designate official newspapers. Resolution fourteen, authorized temporary budget for 2021. Resolution fifteen, fixing interest rates for non-payment of taxes or assessments. Resolution sixteen, adopt cash management plan. Resolution seventeen, assignment of tax sale certificate for block forty-one, twenty-three, lot thirteen. Resolution eighteen, assignment of tax sale certificate for block forty-one, twenty-three, lot five. Resolution nineteen, appointing assessor as agent. Approval is read.
We get a motion for all, please.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Gribbin, I'm sorry, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Gerallo.
Gerallo. Gribbin, Gerallo, discussion on any of the resolutions. Roll call, please.
Counsel person for Joni?
Yes.
Gerallo?
Yes.
Gribbin?
Yes.
Oliva?
Yes.
Olivo?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Mayor DiDonato?
Yes, motion carried.
And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so the, I'm gonna do a, an address, my mayor's address. Before I do that, the second of two opportunities if the public would like to be heard. Six oh nine, five six one, three oh four oh. Six oh nine, five six one, three oh four, if you'd like to be heard on anything. So, Hammington, welcome to 2021, Hammington. Happy New Year, all. We're all blessed to be here today. Twenty twenty was full of major world shifting events. And incredibly challenging financial, emotional and mentally challenging times. Whether it's a frontline worker, a small business owner, a teacher, a parent, a grandparent, a caregiver, a friend or a neighbor. As we reflect on the year, we must first take a moment to remember those we lost this year. Especially those we lost from COVID. I have never been prouder to be a resident of Hammington or your mayor. At the start of 2020 during the reorg meeting, I said, in 2020 and going forward into the new decade, we will stay committed to promoting business culture, volunteers, spend special moments that make us all proud. In 2020, those businesses worked harder than ever before to stay afloat. With online, curbside, creative ways to reach their customers. Our grocery stores pivoted and our frontline workers, our healthcare workers, our public health workers, law enforcement, public safety, first responder, food service workers, public workers and more took great care of us. Our residents met the challenge too by forming committees, supporting businesses and ordering from restaurants. Our volunteers, nonprofits and churches stepped up and were incredible in 2020 with food banks helping a neighbor. Finding a special way to connect us. We were still able to have special moments in 2020 in unique ways. We still had the sixteenth of July, much smaller but a wonderful celebration. A beautiful and special tree lighting. Virtual and outdoor arts. We had a bunny going around with the police and fire truck. We had Santa going around with the police and fire truck and so much more in this wonderful town. We are Hammington strong. And as a community, we came together while the world was forced to stay apart. I am hopefully telling you, I am hopeful in telling you things will be better in 2021. I would like to thank, I would like to take a moment to thank Deputy Mayor Gribbin and Lisa Millie Howe for working on the c- community goodwill committee and supporting residents and helping with those food banks and many other things. I would like to thank the coronavirus economic task force headed by Councilman Oliva and Richard Raymond. And they had many volunteers on both of these committees that I, there, there's too numerous. I cannot mention them all. I'll miss somebody's name. These committees did tremendous work. We had the coronavirus ass outreach and communications, Brooke Sacco and Jen Hatfield. Uh, and then we had, uh, so we were very blessed, those three committees alone. There's more, but those three did a tremendous task and tremendous work for the town of Hammington. I also like to thank, and all day I went back and forth with this, James Donio. Jim Donio and his powerful state networking has brought 1.3 million to Hammington. Six hundred eighty-four thousand in NPP funds that are gonna go benefit and offset rent in the NPP district. Six hundred eighty-four thousand. Another approximately a hundred and fifty thousand for FEMA for reimbursement of some costs we had during, the town had during the pandemic. Two hundred and thirty-five thousand, which we already received uh, through salary reimbursements to the federal government. Three hundred thousand, I believe Councilman Gerallo was distributing approximately, what, three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand, yes.
That'll be distributed to small businesses from the county and it's, it was, it was five hundred and twenty-five thousand was given from small cities for A Carver and Hammington.
Hammington.
And, and we're getting approximately three hundred, roughly, three hundred thousand. So Jim Donio, I always call you the chief of staff. You, you're, you're tops in my book. Thank you very much. Uh, Denise Mazzio, Denise Mazzio stepped up big time. MVP, I always call her the MVP. What a job she's done over the last nine months. She's underpaid and overworked and we're gonna make that right in 21 too, Denise. So thank you for all your hard work. Frank Zuber, business administrator, cool, calm. You can't ask for a better one. I mean, Frank, thank you for all your hard work. Done a tremendous job in keeping us all together.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'd like to thank Chief Freel. Chief Freel, uh, head, headed the coronavirus, uh, safety task force. Kept the Hammington with his, uh, chat with the chief and different things, kept everybody in the loop. Kept everybody safe. The manpower over there at the police department, tremendous job, stepped up big time. Thank you to the chief and thank you to all the men and women of the department. Thank you all. I also have to take a minute, minute to thank the Eagle Theater and, uh, and Cassie Acquavelli, HRC, Hammington Revitalization Corporation, Main Street, Richard Raymond. Uh, and some will say, why the Eagle Theater? Because they did a lot of outreach to the coronavirus task force. And Main Street is handling that money, that five hun- that six hundred eighty-four thousand came from NPP. Thank you all, Rich Raymond, Cassie, you're doing a tremendous job. I gotta thank John Ruffalo, Ben Knott and the Chamber. Tremendous work they've done. Tremendous job. Uh, we're very thankful. Hammington is very blessed to have organizations like this that stepped up. And I have to thank the Hammington Fire Department uh, and the first responders. Big time stepped up. So thank you all. You know who you are. If I missed your name, I apologize. But thank you for everything you've done for this wonderful community. And we wouldn't be here without you. I also would like to take a minute to thank my wife Debbie, our children Matt, Christine and Drew, grandchildren Luke and Mina for their love and support. I would like to thank all the families of each and every councilor person as well as the families of the public servants and volunteers of this great town. I wish everyone a happy, healthy, prosperous and blessed 2021. It's getting better from here, gang. We got this. We're Hammington strong. Thank you all. God bless you all. Uh, with that, uh, I don't think there's anybody that called in, but council, I'll open up the council if anybody would like to say something. Come on, Rodeo, you always wanna talk to the people, Rodeo, come on.
Yeah, let Billy talk, Ed, Olivo, you're first.
All right. I'm just, uh, proud to be back. It's been a number of years since I've been there. Looking forward to working back in the town hall on council with you and I hope everything works out really well. And I hope 2021 is a better year than 2020 because we had, you know, a rough year. It could only be better. So I'm looking forward to that and working with the town of Hammington.
Thank you, Councilman Oliva.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to say just a couple of things. And I think this is, uh, I've been on a few councils. But I wanna say this looks to be one of the best councils I ever, uh, sat on. Uh, just to set out this total, uh, I think like, like, I'll re- re- what Bill said, it's gonna be a tough year here in the beginning. But hopefully it'll get better in the end. And, uh, and, and we are Hammington strong, as you say. And I do wanna say one thing, whether I'm over my head or not, uh, the chief, Mr. Freel, Chief Freel, you've done one hell of a job. And I wanna say this, and like I said, this may be over the top. I think it's one of the best yes votes I ever did sitting on council. Electing you as chief. Good man there, sir. You've done a hell of a job so far. Stay with it.
Thank you. Councilman Rodeo, I appreciate that, sir.
Not a problem, my sir, not a problem. And a last thing, I also do remember the first time there, Mr. Malinsky, uh, got, uh, I was sitting on the zoning board that, uh, that year and he, uh, became our zoning, uh, our zoning solicitor. And, uh, I remember fifteen years ago there, uh, uh, there, Mike, it was a long time ago and we've come a long way, a long way. And you've done a great job, like they said earlier, a great job. That's it, Mayor, I'm good. I'll go on and on.
All right. Uh, he, he didn't have any gray hair. Mr. Moensky didn't have any gray hair fifteen years ago. Is it, uh, Councilman for Joni, just been sworn in again?
Mayor, just wanna wish everyone a happy new year. Uh, thank everyone for their support, for the residents. And, uh, not to echo what everyone else said, but I also think we owe a big shout out to our school board this year. Uh, they are really, really, um, they're giving their all to keep our kids in school as much as possible. I know as a parent, we appreciate it. My, my wife and I, and, uh, you know, I wish them the best this year. They have a lot of tough decisions to make. And, uh, I really am appreciative for all the volunteers that you mentioned. Uh, in a year like this, when people that just stayed in their basement, they did, and they came out in droves and, uh, that's what makes Hammington so unique. So thank you, Mayor, and happy new year to everyone.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Gribbin and?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you for the reappointment a- a- as deputy mayor. It's always an honor uh, to serve on council and to serve in the capacity a- a- as deputy mayor. And I, I appreciate that. And I thank you for the confidence and the faith that you put in me. Um, I wanna welcome Councilman, uh, Olivo. Uh, I'm looking forward to serving with you. I've known you for a long time. We've been good friends and I'm happy to welcome you, uh, to this, to town council. Happy to be, uh, working again with, uh, Sam Rodeo, Councilman Rodeo and Councilman for Joni. I wanna welcome you both back to council and I look forward to, uh, continuing to serve the residents of Hammington with you. As well as Councilman Oliva and Councilman Gerallo. Uh, I'm glad to see Councilman Gerallo back. I'm glad that he's doing well.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Joe, good.
And, and I, I just wanna say, uh, you know, I wanna reiterate everything that everyone has said and the, and the thanks that everyone has given. Um, you know, we always say that, you know, Hammington is a strong community. And boy, when we get put to the test and when there are trying times, um, nothing makes that clearer in Hammington. Uh, to see the town come together the way in which we did with the volunteers that have helped to serve on the committees, Mayor, as you mentioned. Uh, I know from my committee with, uh, uh, Ms. Lisa Howe, who I can't thank enough uh, on the community goodwill committee. Um, it was just, uh, an amazing show of support from, from volunteers and residents in this town. And I, I can't thank them enough. I do wanna reiterate and thank Denise Mazzio and, and Frank Zuber. I wanna thank our police department. Um, they are, uh, they're amazing and they're, uh, and just to reiterate, Councilman Rodeo, the chief, uh, I'm, I'm very glad to have, uh, Chief Freel at the helm uh, leading, uh, leading our, our police department. And they've done an amazing job. Uh, somebody else that's done a great job this year too, I wanna single out is, uh, Police Officer, uh, David Russell. Officer Russell has been very instrumental in helping with a lot of our, uh, videoing behind the scenes too. And I, I wanna, I wanna thank him. Um, I wanna thank, uh, our residents uh, for sticking together, uh, during these times. And, uh, I know that when, uh, Hammington puts their mind to something and stays together that we can get through anything. And we'll get through this and I hope and pray for brighter days for all of us in 2021. So thank you all and happy new year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gribbin.